Welcome everyone to the Village of North Hudson regular, oops, that regular board meeting, the regular finance and personnel committee meeting. Today is Tuesday to March 2021 and we'll call this meeting to order at 6:30. Roll call please.
Trustee Nelson, absent. Pike?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustee Zeiss?
In here.
Excellent. Okay, item two, minutes, regular finance and personnel committee meeting from two February 2021.
Move to approve?
And I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any comments, corrections, additions, or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as presented, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item three, claims, review and recommendations.
San Antonio moved to approve the December 2029 recurring claims of $5,540.55 and the March 2021 non-recurring claims of $136,014.50.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Questions or comments?
Did we buy the chief a new gold shield there? I assume that's, I assume that's the car.
I, I scrolled down into the, into the belly of the minutes to figure that one out too, because that money to Hudson also had me taken aback and it was for the fire, you know, the fire station, or I mean, service payment and stuff. So we should be, you know, everything other, everything else looked real good. I always get those big numbers always jump, especially when it's going that direction.
What's the Spectrum Insurance Group, Melissa?
That's our workers' comp.
Ah.
Yeah, so it gets, it gets split up between the different departments.
Ah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Let's go with Brian.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Thank you. Okay, item four, wages for, wage for municipal clerk court position, discussion, possible recommendation.
And I don't understand, I don't have anything on this and Melissa needs to explain, I guess.
Well, let's see, well, let's see, I'll, I guess I've kind of familiar with what's going on. So I'll make the motion to discuss and possibly pass a wage recommendation for the upcoming new clerk court. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, Melissa.
Okay, so we have the current municipal court clerk is going to be retiring at the end of April and we haven't had to fill that position for quite a while. The previous court clerk was in there from 2006 to 2014 and then she had left and then the current court clerk moved from the full-time police department over and filled that position. So we haven't had to really fill this position for quite a while. And so it's hard to get set like a new starting wage for this position. So I kind of did some checking around and the closest is Village Baldwin is currently hiring for this. It's about the same number of hours per week. They're 15 to 20 hours a week and they're advertising, she said, I talked to administrator there, for 15 to $16 an hour, she said they'll probably start at $16 an hour. I know that's the new, we'll have a new municipal judge as well, starting May 1st. And I know he's kind of concerned with finding someone to fill that position at that price. He's, he suggested, or he requested, we could maybe lower the hours to like 15 hours and then you could do a higher pay. But the village board, the municipal judge hires and fires and oversees that position. However, the village, village board sets the budget for it. So basically the number of hours and the pay for it. So I guess it's kind of a direction I'm looking for in a motion as far as with this new position would possibly start at. I can tell you our other part-time position in the village and they don't get benefits for it, but our other current part-time position, she started at 1650 an hour. So, you know, I don't know if you want to go 1650 to 17. It's, it's kind of up to you guys on the board where you want to start. He's worried about getting somebody to fill that position, which it may be hard for that number of hours. But so that's kind of the background on that.
So were we paying for this already?
Yes.
What wage, what wage were we paying?
Well, what wage are we currently paying, currently paying?
Eight years, yeah. What was that person making?
Well.
At the, at the end?
At the end.
The current one?
Yep.
Um, it'll be 2155.
An hour?
Yes.
So.
But that person moved over from the police department, a full-time position. So it's, the wage was adjusted a little bit when she went down over to that other position. It was adjusted down. But, I mean, the other municipalities have found that are making, there's some making, I think the Village of Hammond, she makes $20, I think, and 55 cents an hour. She works about 10 hours a week. However, she's been there 19 years, you know, so it's, and then the other, like Somerset and Richmond, they're full-time employees there. They have quite a bit bigger court, I'm guessing. Mark can probably answer on that. But they are a full-time position with benefits and so they make like 20, but they've also been there for a while. So I'm just not sure where a good starting point is, but I think minimum 1650 and, I mean, I kind of figured it out. If you were to raise it, the judge was requesting more like 18, $19 an hour. I think that might be a little high because you got to keep it in line with what other staff is starting at.
So is it adjusted on an annual basis or the stays?
It is usually with budget with other raises.
Okay. When we, also when we do that percentage increase, this position gets impacted by it. Okay.
It has, yes.
Okay, that's my.
No.
No benefits.
No benefits.
No, neither one of our part-time positions have any kind of benefits to it. And that with the court clerk position, that varies. They can change their hours. It's approved up to 19 hours a week right now and that's kind of an average, but that's like what we want them to stay. We don't want them to go really heavy one pay period and work, you know, 30 hours one week and 35 hours the next week and then all of a sudden they drop way down at the end of the year to working, you know, five hours. I mean, it should be consistent to a point. I mean, but they can rotate their hours. Like I said, the board approves the number of hours. The judge kind of oversees. He can tell that person, he wants him to work, you know, Monday, Friday from eight to noon or, or whatever. As long as they're kind of, we like to keep it consistent. So we know when to tell people that the clerk is here for them to come in and pay fines and things like that. But yeah, there's no benefits to it. So it's going to be harder to attract, however, you know.
So what number you want, Melissa?
Um, well, I don't really want to pick, but I think a good starting point is probably like 1650 to 17.
Or 16 to 17?
Right. I mean, it's really up to you guys. Like I said, our other part-time started at 1650.
It's kind of hard when you don't know actually what they, you know, how much they do or, you know, I mean, how much actual work that they, you know.
Yeah.
They've got, you know.
Back in 2006, the person that started in 2006 made $14 an hour. But that was in 2006. That's a, you know, 14, 15 years ago. They started at $14.
We're paying 21 right now for this position?
Yes.
So, and the judge wants 18 and 19?
That's what he's requesting, but I told him, you know, that might be kind of hard because it's, when you have other positions starting under.
Oh, I see.
Right.
I see what you're saying.
So our other part-time position in our office, she started at 1650.
What she at?
Not that you have to keep it exactly like that, but it's just kind of to keep that, the positions kind of in line. So not one person's like wasting.
But are the positions in line as far as experience and everything? I mean, are they the same type of role?
Um, no, the, the court clerk role will be obviously quite a bit different than the other part-time position here in our office.
Yeah, can we base that more off of what the responsibilities and requirements are more than so much? I know you want to somewhat compare within municipality, but sometime municipalities, your positions are different than other ones.
Right.
Right?
Yeah. I don't think you got to be level set with the staff. If one position has more responsibility than the other, it's like, you know, on the chief's staff or on Patrick's staff, you know, the chief is getting paid more than the sergeant, sergeant more than the, and then on Patrick's team, same thing. So the responsibilities are different. I honestly, I don't understand the responsibilities of this position, the court clerk, to be able to gauge what kind of wage, but.
Is, Mark, I don't know if you're comfortable answering that. Otherwise, I can certainly send something out if you want to address this later or.
Yeah, I think, I think it would probably be good for the board to, to take a look at a job description. I am assuming that, that you either have it, Melissa, or the judge would, either the current judge or the candidate for judge would be able to find it. But I, you know, I do know that for the most part, it is a clerk's position. So it's collecting money, you know, keeping track of fines, setting up court dates, communicating with attorneys for the defense and the prosecutor for the village on upcoming files and those types of things. So I don't think that there's a, a high level of knowledge that would need to, to come in with that position. I think it is something that's, that, you know, they can build on and, and whatnot. But I think it would be helpful if, if me there, Becky, our current clerk were to put together some, you know, typical hours. I know that we have a 19-hour max, but you know, potentially if she feels that maybe that could be reduced based on her current level. The one thing that I do know, and I guess I was going to bring to the board's attention, it's not anything that we can change currently, but the municipal court in general is a, we don't gain money or, or it's not a money-making position. We, we quote unquote, lose money every year for the amount of expenses that we have for, for income. So I think to try to keep the expenses down for the most part would be beneficial for the board, but we definitely want to make sure that we have a professional person or someone that, that, you know, is not just somebody we pull off the street because they want to make $16 an hour. It is a pretty important position as well. So that's my, my statement on that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask is what are the job, or I mean, is there, when we post the job or whatever, if there are certain criteria or requirements that, that we would look for in a candidate or experience or anything like that?
Well, unfortunately, since we haven't posted this position in so long, I don't have that, but I can check with the current clerk to see if she has something she can give me. Um.
Does this person get reviewed?
By the judge.
Okay. Is there, they're using our review format, basically?
Uh, he, no, he, the judge oversees this person. So I don't oversee them at all. But I can get some information together and either get it for the board or we can table this discussion until next month. I know I'm going to put the ad out there with what I can get together. I got kind of a job description from Baldwin, Village of Baldwin, and I can have the current clerk kind of look at that and see if that's meets the same.
Adequate, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see. Start getting the candidates, yeah, get the candidates moving out, you know, in that direction, then you'll, and we can vote by next meeting. We should be able to vote on this, right?
Yeah, I, I want to get it posted this, probably this week or next week. But, you know, realistically, they probably, I know the judge would be interviewing them and he asked for me to assist him with that. But he is out of the state for the month of March. So.
So nothing really has to happen until the end of March?
Uh, not as far as pay, but we can advertise and get candidates together for him.
And advertising's like at least a couple weeks, maybe three weeks period there with interviews at the end?
Right. So the judge, when he gets back, he'd do that.
It'd be good to, it'd be good to show us a job description because.
Yeah. I'll get the one that I, like I said, I got some information from the Village of Baldwin because they're currently hiring as well right now for this position. They're having their clerk retiring after numerous years as well. So I'll get that and then I'll give it to the current court clerk and have her review it and see if that's adequate, if it's what, you know, she says that's what she does basically, and then we'll kind of go from there and I can get that to you guys.
Great.
Okay.
So the motion basically, basically what? So there's a motion out there to discuss it. Discussion basically is to table it?
Or we post, you know, change it to, to post the job and, and we come back for the wages or I don't know. I mean.
Well, we were just, the motion was wages.
Yeah.
To discuss the wages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so that was carried. Mark, do they have, remember this, excuse me, do they have to, well, she did discuss the wages. So I guess you could make a new motion.
We discussed it, just to table it.
Right, you discussed it. So you can, you don't even have to make a motion. You can just say, you know, this is going to be continued on to next month.
Yeah, the April meeting that's in March.
Yep, and that's fine. You can leave it at that.
All right. So we don't need to vote on that then, right?
Correct. Correct. There should be no vote there, right?
You already voted the first motion, right?
No, there wasn't, there was, there was no vote.
Oh, no, they didn't vote to discuss the wages.
Yeah, okay, draw the motion. Sure. Okay.
Okay.
That's all.
Sorry, I thought you had voted on that.
No.
Okay.
Okay, next is auto dialer East Bank lift station, discussing possible recommendations.
Stan, we moved to purchase and install a sent, a sentinel auto dialer unit from TPC Inc. with cost not to exceed 3725. 3,725.
And I'll second that too.
Uh, any discussion? Pretty quiet. This is all, we have this all budgeted and it's all, and it's to repair the, that we need this down there? Is this an add-on?
It, it's from monitoring. Well, Patrick, go ahead.
Yep, it's, it'll be, it'll be part of the new control panel. It's for monitoring to give us, the, the lift station will literally call us if something happens.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, any other discussion? Hearing none, Tim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Okay, and that brings us to item six, which says that we are adjourned at 6:48. Thank you very much and we'll see you in 12 minutes. I would like to call the, welcome everyone and call the Village of North Hudson Regular Board Trustees Meeting to order at seven o'clock on Tuesday to March 2021. See, I have a short invocation. Lord, forgive us for rejecting your principles and authority. Forgive our nation for straying from the very foundation upon which we were founded and established. We have been reckless with the freedoms you have entrusted us. Please heal our nation and restore our land. Thank you. And roll call, please.
Trustee head?
Here.
Leaf? Absent? Matts?
Here.
Nelson, absent. Pike?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustee Zeiss?
Here.
Thank you. Item two is review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting from two February 2021.
Move to approve?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Any discussions, corrections, amendments? Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as presented, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item three, comments from the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, either on or not on today's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that has something that we don't know about that they'd like to share? Hearing none. That means everybody's here for one reason. Item four, reschedule April village board meeting and finance to March 30th, 21 due to spring elections. Is there a motion?
So moved. Go ahead. I'll second.
Thank you.
So Nate, Nate, is that going to cause any conflict with cable board?
We should be done by the time you guys get going.
I would think so, yeah. Okay. Thanks.
All righty then. Let's see, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of moving the April meeting to March 30th, saying by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item five, new business from the board or staff. The president's comments are first and I'd just like to let everyone out there know that we are still in discussion, trying to work on the water and sewer agreements and responsibilities for the city, with the city of Hudson. Our whole goal with this is to, you know, negotiate the affair in equitable price for all consumers, all users of the services. So we're just, we, it's an ongoing discussion. So I just thought I would bring that up. And then not a lot else, except in a couple of weeks, we spring ahead. So the, the beautiful spring season is, is upon us and we look forward to that. And, and then I'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy St. Patrick's Day. Melissa?
Yeah, so the spring election will be held on Tuesday, April 6th. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8 o'clock PM. And then in-person absentee voting will begin on Tuesday, March 23rd, and it goes through Friday, April 2nd. That's all I got.
That's all we got. Okay. All right. The moment we'd all been waiting for. Plan Commission Recommendations, Chair Update. I didn't see, I, I think you must have this, Paul?
Sure, I can comment on that.
I didn't see Mike join us.
Do we, do we want to, do we want to do a motion first here?
Well, Paul's just going to give the.
Chair updates first, yeah.
First, chair update.
Yeah. The Plan Commission had a, I would describe it as a very spirited meeting. There was a lot of discussion about the situation with the lift, how the application process went through. And ultimately, the Plan Commission did make a motion to approve with some recommendations. And I can go into more detail if you like now, or we can wait until there's a motion on the floor to discuss specifics.
Let's go with the motion now. That way we can, then you can start right off. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve condition, use permit of Heidi Mailer to construct an elevator slash lift at 222 Summers Landing Road North, pin number 161-1062-50-000.
Oh. We need the conditions?
Yeah, I would suggest that the, the conditions include the amended motion from the Plan Commission.
Do we have those in here?
There are on the.
Yes, okay. I see them. And so to amend my motion, that would include the conditions for approval that have been recommended by the Plan Commission.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
So I'll just give a little background. You know, I think a couple of things happened in this situation that were unfortunate. First of all, you know, the North Hudson Code is pretty specific and detailed about what needs to be done to have an application for the riverway. There's a number of items that should be submitted, vegetation plans, engineered drawings, you know, pictures from the river, aerial photos. And when the initial application came in, you know, it was really deficient in a lot of those items. And so the application got delayed. The applicant then, you know, made an attempt, a better attempt to satisfy those conditions for last month's meeting. There was also, I think, some confusion as to the cutting that was done in the riverway. Now, clearly, you cannot go and cut, essentially clear-cut, a swath down the slope into the riverway. It's, I mean, anyone that works in the riverway, any landscape person, any tree service that does any work in the riverway should know this. They should know better. Now, I think the applicant, you know, did make an attempt. They talked, she, she said she talked to Patrick about doing that. You know, in some situations, I think that's appropriate. You know, if there's a tree that's leaning, that's going to cause damage to a home, you know, that can be cut. This is a different situation. You know, you cannot cut until you get the permit. And everyone needs to know that. And I think the Plan Commission was upset. Some members even voted to deny the conditional use permit based on that. Ultimately, there was some give and take. The applicant changed their plans, provided a better landscape plan, a mitigation plan, and the, I think everything was satisfied and the Plan Commission voted to approve.
With the conditions that are listed.
With the conditions, yes. And, and the applicant did follow that up with a lot better landscape plan from a landscaping company.
So helping out with what was clear-cut? Helping the bank?
Yeah, yeah, to do some mitigation, to do some erosion control, you know, and it, and really that, if you look at your ordinance, it's all in there.
Yep.
You know, you can't blame staff for not reading the ordinance and submitting a proper application. Now, there was some discussion about entertaining fines both for the applicant and for the tree service that did the cutting. That's up to the board, I guess.
That's, that's in the second bullet here, right?
You know, I think my position, I'm not the board, but, you know, the applicant did make an attempt to talk to the village beforehand. And again, there was some confusion about what was going on there. So maybe fines is not an appropriate situation here, but your ordinance provides for fines for the applicant as well as any contractor that does the cutting because they need to know better.
Do we, are we allowed to know which contractor did that work?
Yeah, it was Save a Tree.
Really? Okay, well, they should know.
Well, that was a little surprising to the Plan Commission.
Yeah.
They should know better.
Okay.
Just FYI, there are representatives from, I believe, Save a Tree and.
I see Scott Hanky is here.
Here.
Yeah.
Online, so.
And I'm sure Patrick has additional information.
But, but so if I'm reading this thing right, that, that's number C, right? Possible fines. So can we come back to that and just deal with the permit?
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
Is there a guideline, Paul, for, I mean, what they're, the fines and stuff? I think there's something listed.
Uh, your code talks about the citation ordinance schedule and I didn't have a copy of that. But I'm sure there is one. You know, if you're talking about fines for failure to get, you know, general building permits, those range from 50 to $500 and those are daily fines.
Okay, further discussion. Tim, you look like you're.
Well, that fines though aren't associated. Well, I mean, first of all, we're going to approve the actual construction of the elevator. And then second, we discussed the fines. The fine, the amount you just talked about, Paul, as far as the building permit, that doesn't reference the actual tree cutting fines, would it?
Well, that would be for cutting in the riverway prior to getting.
And we have an ordinance that determines how much that value, that fine should be?
Yeah, and it, it, your ordinance references, references the citations. Yeah, and it, it, your ordinance references, or references the citation schedule that the village has adopted, I just don't have that schedule.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's, I want to make that clear, I'm sure, thank you.
Melissa, you have that when we get to the fines discussion.
Um, Paul, you said it references our fee schedule, the fines for tree, for, I don't know where on our fee schedule it would spell that out.
It's not the fee schedule, it's a citation schedule?
Oh. I wouldn't have the citation schedule, no. Um.
Yeah, when we get to the fines thing, it would be helpful to know that, but.
Yeah, I, I just have our fee scheduled, but I mean, citation schedule, that's something through the police department, I don't have that, I don't know if he would have that. Because I don't think that she, obviously, the police department's not gonna issue a ticket. That may be a Brian Wirth question.
So, can I call the question on the on the conditional use permit?
Certainly.
Mister President.
Would you like to have a vote right now on the, on the uh?
Unless there's further discussion on the actual permit. Cause we keep going to.
Fines is. One second, Brian, sorry, I want to just clarify then, so the Planning Commission was satisfied based on their motion, everything to carry this forward to the board, so I think as far as what's submitted, what I'm reviewing these plans, they're okay and everything, and that's the side of it, Paul, right, correct?
Yeah, that, you know, the applicant, the applicant submitted better plans, some engineered drawings.
It appears.
Um, a landscape plan, you know, a mitigation plan from a real landscape person, um, and, and so I think that's fine. There was also discussion about the size of the lower landing. Um, and I think the motion reads that it was as shown on the plan. There was some back and forth as to whether or not that could be smaller. And I think the representative from either the construction company or the land, or the lift company said that they would attempt to make it a little smaller if that worked out. But it can't be bigger than what was shown on the plan. And ultimately, the Plan Commission was satisfied with that, at least the majority of them were.
Okay, I'm fine, Brian.
And, and there's been, there was no issues with the DNR or anything on a national wild and scenic river that this occurred?
Well, the, the DNR did not know that they cut prior to getting a permit, to my knowledge. Um, the DNR did comment on the application and found a number of the items deficient, which was why it was delayed from November, December till now. And the applicant changed the application. The Plan Commission made some conditions to make it comply with the DNR regulations, uh, one of those was the polycarbonate clear glass uh, was exchanged for something that's earth toned and non-reflective, and I, I don't know if it's a metal or what's gonna be in there. But to my knowledge, the DNR did not know that they clear-cut beforehand.
So Brian Wirth did look at this in November, and I think it came to the Planning Commission in December, correct initially? I think I did watch that, or is that right, Paul?
Yeah, that sounds right, yeah.
Yeah, it's been, we've kind of discussed this before.
Yep, I know, I seen it.
And it, you know, these lifts are, are readily approvable. And it's just unfortunate that the initial application wasn't done better. And there was no clear-cutting, because it would have gone through smooth. And it didn't, for those reasons.
Any further discussion? Welcome Kathy, I see Kathy has joined us now.
Sorry, I feel retarded.
Hey, you got a lot of, you know, a lot of different hats to wear. Okay, so uh, here, no further discussion. Uh, and it's not a spending issue, so all in favor of approving the uh, recommended uh, uh, conditional use permit with the conditions that the Planning Commission has listed, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, okay, item C, possible fines. For tree cutting relation to conditional use permit at two twenty-two Summers Landing Road North, discussion possible approval.
And just, I, again, I, there was a lot of discussion about fines, and I don't think that the Plan Commission, you know, voted up or down to recommend a fine. Um, you know, I think Mary made the motion, but she just wanted that explored. She also wanted, you know, the, the folks on the Riverway to be informed um, of the rules. You know, they, there's, those houses are precious houses along the Riverway, it's a, you know, we live here, we enjoy the river, but there are rules that come with it. And they need to be followed. And some people, you know, don't pay attention, they don't understand, so I think that was part of her motion to, you know, to educate people, as opposed to punishing.
So do we know what the fine is yet, Melissa?
My, the only thing I have is my fee schedule, and there isn't anything listed for a fine on there. So Paul, I'm not sure where I would find that, unless it's something Brian Wirth would recommend.
Yeah, I looked for the fine before the meeting, and, and the only reference was the citation schedule.
Okay, so the Planning Commission felt like we should be talking about it by way of example, like, can we recommend?
I, I think they wanted some more information as to exactly what happened. Um, from Patrick, from the tree service, from the applicant, because there was, you know, the tree service wasn't at the meeting. The applicant said, she talked to someone named Patrick, she thought she had the go-ahead. Um, and that's as far as it went, because they didn't really have all the information, so I think their desire was to actually find out what went wrong here, and make sure it doesn't happen again.
So was the removal of the trees done after Brian Wirth signed off on it in November thirtieth?
Brian doesn't sign off on anything with the conditional use permit, he just, he just reviews the plans, and then he submits his recommend, his list of conditions.
So there's no opportunity for him to go down and take a look at any activities during that point of view, that's right, okay.
To my knowledge, he didn't go.
Everything he does is basically off a paper and what's been submitted.
Right.
So that.
So Scott.
Go ahead, go ahead, Brian.
Scott, Scott, are you on here?
Yes, I am.
So, how does Save, did Save-A-Tree just make a mistake, or did they not know the rules?
Uh, no, I know the rules, um, I thought Heidi had gotten the permit for the vegetation cutting. Um.
Okay.
You know, uh, Heidi talked to Patrick, I think she thought, after talking to Patrick, that she had to go ahead. Um, that's probably in a nutshell what, what happened, um. I've, I've done this work for a long time. Uh, on both, both uh, Minneap, or Minnesota and Hudson sides, Wisconsin side, so, no, I definitely know know the rules.
Okay, and Patrick?
Yeah, I, I believe what Scott said was probably uh, pretty accurate, I think there was just uh, some miscommunication. Um, I know for a fact that really the only thing that I can approve would be a, a dead uh, diseased tree or something like that, that's, that's the only thing I have, or I can say, yeah, go ahead, you know, cut down, um, to take care of, and just so that everyone knows, um, Scott and I have a longstanding history for as long as I've been here anyway, but um, we have uh, streamlined our process now. Um, Jessica's also involved with us, so we have three people, um, so from this point forward, um, anytime that we're close to the river, um, any kind of pruning or tree maintenance will, um, they'll submit a plan to us, their work order, and then Jessica and I will both see it, I'll go inspect it, talk, uh, call, or uh, email back to Jessica, let her know that everything's good, and, and then all three of us will be on that email, so um, definitely has made us uh, open our eyes, I guess I could say.
So Paul, in the, in the fining here, is the fining for the person that cut the trees down, or is it for the landowner? Or is it both?
The ordinance allows for both.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you know, and, and just to be clear, you know, in the Riverway, you can do some cutting. You know, you can cut down invasive species. You can do some limited trimming. Uh, as Patrick said, you know, if there's a tree that's leaning over and it's gonna fall on your house, you can take that down.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, if you are gonna go down there and, and cut buckthorn and whatever, the ordinance requires that, you know, you mitigate that by planting native species, you know, you don't want to clear-cut and cause erosion. So you can do it, but you know, you need to put something in its place.
Okay, and it sounds like they're gonna do that.
I'd like to build off of Stan's question again, going back to DNR, had DNR come out and looked at it at all, or had, you know, any additional comments came, had come from them?
No, not, not to my knowledge, no.
So.
So with that said, then, I, I, I mean.
And, and the DNR will likely defer to the village.
Okay, that, that.
So we could say Scott owes us at least one free tree clearing, and Heidi owes us a dollar.
Well, the point there is, I mean, I don't know how to put a value on it, because effectively, especially like a DNR would come back and, you know, determine what, what, to what extent the clearing, you know, what it caused, I mean. I, I.
Well, we don't even know what was, what was taken down, I mean, is it possible it was buckthorn that was taken out, or, yeah, Heidi's saying, yeah.
Well, there was information provided as to what was removed.
Where, really?
Yeah.
It's, it's in that, towards the back of the packet.
Okay.
There were trees removed too, as well.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, and, and you're only supposed to clear path, I think, a foot on either side of what you plan on using the lift for.
Okay.
And there was concern by some Plan Commission members that actually viewed it that, you know, there was some excessive cutting, I don't know if that's the case or not.
Can I speak to that?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Please. Um, yeah, it, as far as the cutting, um, I know that that area had, you know, possibly been maintained, so to speak, um, beforehand. So, um, that was with my conversations um, with the tree service and stuff, so, um, to put all of that clear-cutting on one person, I don't think is really fair.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I don't think the Plan Commission was concerned so much on some of the cutting that might have been done by the prior owner. It was really the swath where the lift was gonna be put in.
Well, and that, that's the very last picture, right? That we're looking at? It doesn't look like they went that wide, at least from the picture. How wide is it, do we know?
It was about six to seven feet.
Okay. And the lift itself is how wide?
We need about, this is Harrison from Hillhiker, our cars are, are about three by four feet, and we need at least seven inches to twelve inches on either side of the car.
Okay.
Okay, well, I noticed uh, that, you know, or we talked about it a little bit, that uh, we want to make sure that the rest of the, you know, that everybody, you know, we got new people moving in and in and out or whatever along that river. Maybe, uh, you know, and we talked about sending a mailer or, or some kind of notification out. Uh, you know, if we do that by US postage or whatever, maybe that would be, you know, get the, the bill for that, and, and Heidi could uh, could buck up for the, the cost of us doing the, you know, the contact. And that way, everybody, you know, it's a learning experience for everybody, right? Now, I mean, uh, you know, obviously, there's been enough discussion, I think we've done a, you know, we've got stuff in place and uh, and it's like, hey, uh, you know, we thought we were doing the right thing, but uh, you know, and I can't imagine the, the postage or whatever, and the, you know, the mailings would cost that much money or, or whatever, but I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Hey, Paul, was there any concerns from the neighbors?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Um, Heidi?
Yeah, no, um, I do think this is a really good learning experience for everyone, but when we first moved in there and we were all excited about building a tram to get down to the river, I did talk to both of my neighbors. And um, CR Hackworthy actually gave me um, some names, and that's when I contacted Scott Hanky, he said they were a very reputable tree service place, and I also contacted um, the City of Hudson, which was the wrong place, and then I contacted North Village of Hudson, and I believe I talked to Jessica, and I wondered what I needed to do for a tram. And there wasn't specific um, an outline of exactly what I needed to do, so, you know, that, that probably needs to be laid out too by someone like myself, calling and saying, what do I have to go through, so I did the best to my ability to contact Scott Hanky, then I needed a survey of the property, um, because I contacted Hillhiker, which was another reputable company. Um, and I checked out their recommend, or their um, qualifications. And um, I had had some friends in Chippewa Falls, Wisconsin, on Lake Wasota that had used Hillhiker, and for two of our good friends, and so, um, that's when I con, I reached out to them, and then I didn't, apparently then, uh, to get that permit, um, I needed to get a survey done, so I contacted Brandon Surveying Landscaping, and for, I don't know, three to four thousand dollars, I guess, I had to have a whole total landscape done before Hillhiker can put the rope, uh, rope down, or drew a line down with the cord to the, and we tried to do that without taking as many trees as possible, if I would have gone on the other side of my property, you would have had a lot more trees cut down, and I tried not to do that. Um, because I am an environmentalist, I, I do care about that. Um, I lived on a lake before, we wanted to maintain or keep as many trees as we can, or could. What you saw after the trees fell down is the, what the previous person who lived at the property had done, and CR could attest to that, he wasn't able to be on this call tonight, but Scott could too, because he saw it before he, you know, made that six to seven foot line going down to the river. Um, but I tried to do my best to go through what I knew were the steps to follow, and I had no steps, the North Village of Hudson didn't give me anything, like, you had to go through here, 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 so then, after I contacted.
I guess I just want to comment on that, you know, if you look at the code, there's very detailed requirements for an application. It's listed A, B, C, D, you look down the line for a completed application for a Riverway project. It, the code's online, it's right there.
So I wasn't directed to that.
You just have to look.
Yeah, I, 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 I called, I called to get the, that, to get what I had to do, so I, I wasn't directed to that, no one directed me to that. So I, anyway, so I just contacted the tree service and, and then um, Scott worked with Patrick and contacted Patrick, and I thought after I talked to Patrick that, you know, he had said he worked closely with Scott, and he knows what he's doing, and I thought I had permission, I didn't know anything other than that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a communication breakdown, Paul, I mean, at this point.
Yeah, it sounds like it, and we, it wouldn't hurt us to put together a step-by-step. Uh, Melissa, Patrick.
We do give a conditional use application, and there's a procedure sheet that tells them, you know, when to file, what to file, and it's, you know, it, they do need to read the code too, but there is a procedure sheet. It doesn't say step-by-step call Save-A-Tree, call Scott, you know, call Hillhiker, of course, it's not gonna say that. But there is an application and a procedure sheet given. So.
And it, it kind of lets them know that you can't clear, that lets them know they can't clear-cut.
No, they gotta refer to the code, oh my gosh, that code, that part of the code is twenty pages long. You know, I mean, anything that has to do with the Lower Sincere Riverway, they need to refer to that code.
Okay, so we're asking the neighbors to read the code book? Essentially.
If you have a house on the Riverway, you need to be aware of what those rules are.
Okay.
It's a national scenic Riverway.
I like your idea, Stan.
It goes with the territory, and I guess the question still is out there, Stan. Stan's question is, is the applicant willing to pay for some postage for the village to inform the residents of the village? So this doesn't happen or is less likely to happen in the future.
Stan, may I make a comment regarding the fine situation?
Absolutely.
So I think this board is, is making some decisions tonight. And I think if a, if a fine decision is made, I would like to recommend to the board that you take a look at what the procedure would be, whether it's a municipal citation, where those fines might fall. I realize you're trying to come up with an alternative and I appreciate that. But I think I would recommend that you do not make a decision. If you decide you want to move forward with the fine until we know, just like we're talking to this applicant about the procedures, that we know what that procedure would look like. Because again, they may have an opportunity to bring this before a municipal court judge, have someone defend them. And so I want to make sure, before you make that decision, uh, if she doesn't agree to what you're proposing, uh, that that be something that does not make, the decision is not made tonight on a fine until we know what the procedure is.
Do we refer it to a committee? Or what do we do then to work that out, do you think?
Personally, I think you have professionals like Melissa and myself that could look into what that procedure would be and then bring that back to the board at a future meeting.
Well, can I make a motion to do that?
Second.
I'm just saying.
You don't have to say it, it's a good motion, I agree.
It is a good motion, I agree.
What was the motion?
To have, have, uh, you and chief work through a process to bring to the board.
Determine what type of fine we're going to apply and where it's going to be aligned to.
Yes, yes.
Well, and I had no intention of this, you know, I mean, I, in lieu of the fine, I mean, we wouldn't have to deal with that. It's just, I would thought, well, all right, uh, you know, how, what, you know, I, I can't imagine there's that many places over there that, that postage and or cost of, you know, producing a little, uh, uh, guideline is, uh, would be that expensive. But I mean, that's, uh, if, if we want to go with the motion for, uh, to, to set, uh, uh, the chief and Melissa to task on this, uh, uh, I could, uh, I'll call the board. Kathy? Yes? Lori?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I will agree with the board. Uh, thank you. And then Heidi, or, or would you be opposed to this or, uh?
I, I just feel like I hired professionals. And when I'm an outsider coming through and you want me to read a whole code book and see what I need to do, I figured that when I hired the professional people I did, the land surveying company, you know, Save a Tree, um, Hillhiker, I thought it would be all taken care of. It's kind of like, you know, going out and buying a car from a dealership and all of a sudden, oh, you don't have this. Now you're going to be finding not the dealership. I mean, I, I don't feel like, like I said, I think it's a learning experience. And, um, I thought I was taking the right action by, no one ever told me to get the list of, you know, what I was supposed to do. When I called the North Village of Hudson, I would have totally come in, gotten whatever I needed to get. I just was asking the questions. I didn't go out and do some extensive research on the internet myself. I was just hiring people that I thought could represent me. That's all.
Well, there's like, as Paul has, has said a couple of different times, it's, uh, the property owners to do anything on the, on the lower wild scenic river, it's their responsibility to do due diligence in order to, uh, to see what there is there. I mean, if it's in the code book, I mean, that's readily accessible on our website. And, uh, you know, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, get the smoothest through as easy as possible. But, uh, you know, I mean, there's somebody, you know, I mean, I don't know, you know, being, I think there's as much responsibility to the property owner yourself as there is to, uh, that, uh, we don't, nobody was there, so we don't know what was said or whatever.
So, all right. Calling the question here, Stan, we voted, we voted to move it over to chief and Melissa. I think, uh, that's all we need to do. We can probably move on here on this.
Agree.
Especially with what the, especially with what the chief said. If we were to try and determine something tonight without enough research, it could come back to bite us. So I think we need to just.
All right. No, I got no problem with that. I was just, I thought this would be easier solution, but you ought to go with that. Uh, I'll, uh, you know, let's see, we get a vote on that yet?
We did, yep.
We did.
We did vote on that, so, uh, we'll, uh, move, uh, I guess we'll move along. Anybody else? Yeah. Okay. Item seven, Personal and Finance Committee Meeting, uh, Recommendations. Claims approval requested.
Stan, I saw moved to approve December 2020, non-recurring claims of $5,540.55 and March 2021, non-recurring claims of $136,014.50.
Thank you, Tim's, there a second?
Second.
Second.
Yeah. I don't know which one you got, Melissa, but, uh, is there any discussion or questions? For paying our fire contract in this one, that was one of the big, you're part of our fire contract. That's one of the big numbers. That's why the numbers are so high. So, uh, it's, uh, but anything else looked, it was pretty much normal. So if there's no other discussion, uh, Tim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I'll approve also. Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is, uh, wage from municipal court position discussion approval requested. I believe, uh, did we table this in finance? So, uh, we'll take that off the, uh, agenda for this evening. Uh, thank you all for attending that we're here. Uh, let's see, next on the item is, uh, Public Works Committee Recommendations. Brian?
Um, Stan, for my update, uh, just a mention of the Highway 35 project. One week from today, I think, can Kevin correct me at 11:00 AM in the morning? All bids are due in for the 35 construction. Is that correct, Kevin?
That is correct, still scheduled for next Tuesday.
Okay, would you mind just giving a little blurb about what happens next right up to May 1? Like, like you gave to the, uh, public, or the public utilities? Or the public utilities, Public Works?
So yeah, definitely, um, so everything's, um, submitted electronically through the DOT. They're actually doing the bid letting. Again, that's next Tuesday at 11:00, those are due typically in about two to three hours after everything is in, they'll do like the ASBID, um, readings. So it gives you an idea of, you know, who the contractor submitted numbers on and what the dollar amount is. And then it's typically towards the end of the week before they'll actually disclose all the itemized. So all the light items with the unit prices. Um, from there, then they look at, you know, look at, uh, awarding the contract. Typically that takes six to eight weeks, um, before those are all executed. From there, then there's a pre-construction meeting that's scheduled. Uh, and then after that, then truly construction is, um, looking at being started. So realistically, where we're at now, it's probably going to be towards the end of April, beginning of May, before you'll actually see any contractors out there starting any work.
Okay. And then, uh, any, any questions for Kevin about that? Okay, um, then the Malibu Bridge. So something happened on March, well, actually it's dated March 5, 2018. Um, signed by Stan on July 23rd, 2018. And it's a state municipal maintenance agreement. And the state decided they were no longer going to pay for the county to clear the Malibu Bridge sidewalks. So that has landed on our plate. And while we don't have something to do, the west sidewalk, and we're just basically blocking it off when it's, when there's heavy snow out there, um, per the chief and Patrick, uh, we are able to do the, uh, east side and keep that clear at this point in time. And I just wanted to make the board aware that that is something new that's on our plate. And then, uh, there is a discussion, I just, this is something I throw out to the board to be thinking about. Um, with the 35 project coming up, we're, we're talking about seal coating for next, or for this year. And how much do we want to do of that kind of thing? And it's going to come up again in our next Public Works meeting. So I just want you guys to let your Public Works Committee know if you think that with the 35 project going on, we should back off on seal coating this next season or not. I'm just looking for some input, not tonight. But if you get a chance, let us know if you think us doing seal coating during the 35 project might be a little too much for the village. And then, uh, we have one thing to bring forward, Stan. And that is the East Bank Santory Sewer Lift Station Auto Dialer. We have gotten the, uh, new control panel in. And now we need to be able to monitor. And so this is the, I think the last step, right? As far as control panel goes, Patrick? So this gets us reporting from that control panel. So the recommendation is to purchase and install a Sentinel Auto Dialer unit from TPC Inc. With cost not to exceed $3,725.
Second.
Is, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, Kathy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And yes. Thank you, is that it, Brian?
Yes, for me, thanks.
Okay, uh, next is Public Safety Committee Recommendations Chair Update, Tim?
Thank you, Stan. Uh, one comment on the Stripes Survive, uh, so, a steering committee that we formed, we have met. We've, we're organized now and, uh, we have been getting some great information from the communication from the, uh, manager from DOT. And, uh, should provide a lot of information that Kevin updated just now. Um, we will start to get this on, uh, the agenda as we get closer to the construction and we'll have some information we can share during then. Um, one thing we have to bring to the committee, um, Stan would like to move to approve the application for a fireworks paraphernalia license, temporary use permit for Stars and Stripes Buyers Group Inc., uh, uh, Fireworks National, Nation, I'm sorry, Nation, this with the following inclusions. No smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguers available, no fireworks sold to persons under the age of 18, and operation not to exceed 180 days per calendar year.
Thank you, Tim's, there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian. Any further discussion?
I just want to know if Anders is going to put some good fireworks in there? I saw he's on here, so.
Thank you, where this is the old bank, uh, location at, in North Hudson, where this is going to be.
Yep.
Andy? He's not going to respond. All right, so we're good.
Well, okay, uh, all in favor of the license application transfer, saying I?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, Public Welfare Committee Recommendations, I don't, Kirk is not here. Did they, did it not meet, Melissa?
No, they did not.
Park Board?
Uh, I don't believe they met either.
Alrighty, uh, brings us then to item 12. Our, uh, monthly board may convene in the closed session pursuant to statute 19.85, parent one, parent lowercase e, to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of the pro, public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business. Wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session with respect to the water and sewer ad hoc committee updates. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed session.
Thank you, Kathy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, is, uh, and, uh, and we'll vote on that right away. All in favor of going into closed session, say goodbye by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Okay. And, uh, we're back in the, uh, open session from, uh, our closed session discussion. And there is no actionable items or anything to be brought forward at this time. Uh, continue, the discussions will continue with the city. And, uh, then, then the next item on the agenda would be, we are adjourned at 8:18. Thank you, everyone, for.
Good night, everybody.
Chatting and, uh, nice discussion. So, uh, have a blessed day and, uh, we'll, uh, see you on the 30th, I guess.
Thank you.